Hello and welcome to the candidate forum for Oak Park Heights City Council. I am Diane Doll, a member of the League of Women Voters of the White Bear Lake area from outside of Oak Park Heights, and I will be your moderator. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voters' rights. Though the League studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Our goal is to encourage citizens to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on your ballot on November 5th. All candidates who filed to run for this position were invited to participate, and today we have Chuck Doherty, Mike Runk, and Blake Vandenberg with us. To begin, each candidate will introduce themselves by name and make an opening statement of up to one minute. Our timekeeper will show warning signs at 30 seconds and 15 seconds, and then a stop sign. At that time, you can finish your sentence. For the opening statement, candidates will respond in alphabetical order. Thereafter, the order of speaking will be rotated, and I will call on you. Candidates will have one minute to respond to each question. Candidates, you do not have to use the full minute. You can just say what you have to say and be done, and that may allow us time for more questions. We'll have an hour for our forum today, and I'll watch the time and make sure that when we have five minutes left, we can move on to the closing statements. Each candidate will have three opportunities to clarify information or rebut another candidate's responses. Each rebuttal is limited to 30 seconds, and a candidate may use only one rebuttal for each question. When questions are finished, candidates will have one minute for their closing statement, and that will be in reverse alphabetical order. Questions were received in advance from the public and reviewed by a committee of League of Women Voters members. We will not use questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature. We may consolidate questions that fall in the same general topic area. All questions submitted are the property of the League of Women Voters. All right, so let's begin with our opening statements, and candidate Doherty, you will be first on this.
Thank you very much, and good morning. My name is Chuck Doherty. I've been on the Oak Park Heights City Council now for three terms, and I'm running for my fourth one. I have lived in Oak Park Heights since 1999, along with my wife and my three daughters, and I also own the Water Street Inn downtown Stillwater. Reason, I did a lot of thinking about whether I was going to run for this term, and basically I think that one of the biggest issues coming up is going to be the XL King Plant, and that closing down in 2028. And I feel that I'm a good person to be involved with the city and help guide us to that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Runk.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for response from this forum. My name is Mike Runk. I'm a lifelong resident of the Oak Park Heights Stillwater area. I've lived in Oak Park Heights, and my current residence since 1989. I'm a graduate of Stillwater High School, University of Minnesota, Twin Cities. I'm retired from the U.S. Postal Service, working out of the Stillwater 55082 office for 35 years. I have been involved with the city. I said I was on the Planning Commission, I was on the Parks Commission, no, I've been on the city councils for four terms. So, as Councilman Doherty mentioned, right now we're kind of in a period of flux going through with the King Plant closing and...
Thank you. Candidate Vandenberg.
Thank you. I want to say thank you for having me today. My name is Blake Vandenberg, and unlike my two opponents this year, I'm different. My background is not solely based on Oak Park Heights and Stillwater community. I was born and raised in the St. Francis area of Minnesota. That was where I was born. I'm the oldest of 10 children. I have seven special needs adopted siblings coming from a diverse background, both special needs and racially diverse. I spent 13 years of my professional career working in nonprofits and then in animal agriculture in Iowa, and then moved back to Oak Park Heights in 2018, where my partner Megan and I renovated a house. We built it and did a lot of home renovations ourselves, and then I currently continued my career in agriculture, and then now run my own consulting organization. So I have a diverse background outside of the local city politic realm.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our questions now, and candidate Vandenberg, you'll be first on this one. If anyone needs me to repeat the question before your turn, feel free to ask. Here's the first question. If elected, what would be your top three priorities for the city, and how would you move those priorities forward?
I think Oak Park Heights is in a unique position with the King Plant closing. We need to make sure we replace that tax base. We need to come up with some creative, innovative ideas moving into the next generation. We've had a lot of people on the council who have been on the council for a long time, three, four, five generations, right? And I think it's time to look towards the future utilizing some different technologies. Some things weren't invented when a lot of people joined this council, and I think it's time to utilize that to help this community gain a better tax base. I think we're also in a unique position as an innovator within the community with Bayport's partnerships and the Stillwater to the north to utilize and partner with our neighbors a little more efficiently than we have in the past. And I think that that is a good goal of mine, is to make sure we work together closely with our neighbors to continue to innovate around our surroundings, especially as Lake Elmo and some of these surrounding communities continue to grow and thrive.
Thank you. All right, candidate Runk.
Over the next four years, the city's going to experience a number of things where we have to have priorities. Obviously, the King Plant is going to have a tremendous effect on our property tax base. We have to continue to operate efficiently and plan ahead for the opportunities we have for increasing our funds. Second item would be the fact that we are under a situation with a PFAS water problem that we have to be aware of because it apparently it's going to overtake us and will create a problem for our water supply that we'll have to figure out solutions for. And also, one, some would say minor, but we do have an issue of our boulevard trees that's going to cost us additional monies that we had not originally planned for.
Thank you. Candidate Doherty.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes.
Thank you.
If elected, what would be your top three priorities for the city, and how would you move those forward?
Okay, thank you. As top three priorities, I would say the King Plant closing would be number one. PFAS is going to be an issue that's coming at us, and we don't really know where that's going to go. And for me, it would be maintaining our parks and trails, doing all that without hopefully raising taxes. On the King Plant, we've been working with a stakeholder group. City came up with some plans. You know, it's basically XL Energy's property. They can kind of do whatever they want to in the long run. We probably know a lot of where they're going to go for another couple of years, but just to be on top of that and try to figure out how do we replace that tax base with something. PFAS, just monitoring, also keeping track of other funding sources and where that can come from. And parks and trails, we basically, we started to fund, we're funding for $150,000 per year to keep the trails in good maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to question number two, and candidate Runk, you'll be first. Here's the question. What skills and experience do you have that make you uniquely qualified to be a city council member in Oak Park Heights?
My background education-wise was from the University of Minnesota, was political science, so I've always kind of been into government and its operation. As far as for Oak Park Heights, the fact that, yes, I've lived here, I'm familiar with the area, I worked in the area. I studied daily, was on the streets here. It got me a unique perspective as far as how things operate, and I see how the community moves, works together, and also confronts their problems. I think that the experience of being on the council, I've learned a lot, particularly about issues when we start talking about PFAS and tax base and such, so I think that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. All right, candidate Doherty.
Yes, well, I've been in the community since 1987. I'm a business owner. Started and bought our first business, a bed and breakfast in Stillwater, renovated that. When I lived in Stillwater, I was on Heritage Preservation Commission and Planning Commission at different times. I run a business in downtown Stillwater, the Water Street Inn. We employ a lot of people. I have a good idea of what's going on with the economy and talking with all my, with our staff, of diverse, different people. And I think being on the council, I've learned a lot. I know what's going on, have been on many different committees and commissions to help move things forward, and I think that's a good base to start from.
Thank you. Candidate Vandenberg.
Yeah, as I stated earlier, I'm different than the local people. I've been in the community since 2018, but my background is extensive when it comes to EPA regulations, DOT regulations, which are both major issues in this community as we move forward with the cleanup of the King Plant and the PFAS situation, both of the topics that we've talked about tonight. And I have an extensive commercial experience in that, in agriculture world, managing some of the largest egg production facilities in the United States. Largest facility I was a part of had over 9 million egg layers at it. So I bring a unique, different perspective to the city that the city has made some decisions in the past that shows that they're learning, right? And I don't have to learn because I've done that in the past in other parts of the United States. I also think that being a small business owner is important, and I agree with Mr. Doherty that it's an important aspect of running local businesses. In my experience with operating my own business and running a local Minnesota business as part of the Minnesota State Fair is a huge value to the local communities.
Okay, thanks a lot. Moving on to the next question, and we've all touched on this a little bit, but here's, maybe it's another chance. What previous community involvement have you had in Oak Park Heights? And first here is Mr. Vandenberg.
Yes, I've been on the Planning Commission for going on four years. I'm currently the chair of the Oak Park Heights Planning Commission. I also serve on some other nonprofits through assistance with FFA over the years, as well as 4H in the local communities, as well as local community neighborhood events and sorts like that within the Oak Park Heights city.
Okay, thanks a lot. Okay, candidate Runk.
Well, as mentioned before, I served on the Planning Commission at one point, I also served on the Parks Commission. Obviously, over the years, I've been involved in a number of things, police scouts, church, schools, other opportunities that I've had. I've been here a long time, and I've been involved in a lot of things.
Thank you. Candidate Doherty.
Yeah, as far as on council, when we first moved into this community, I was on the Parks Commission, I served on that for, I think, about seven years, and then on to council, obviously. Other groups I'm in, I'm active with the Lions Club, I'm active with a group called Summer Tuesday, which is a nonprofit that I helped form that puts on free events in the area, and I'm active with my church and with the Knights of Columbus. Not necessarily an Oak Park Heights thing, but I have, I served four terms on the state tourism advisory board, appointed by different governors to that, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, question number four, and Mr. Doherty, you're first here. Do you think the city is doing everything it can to mitigate the PFAS in the city's water supply? And if not, what additional ideas do you have to address the issue?
I think right now, we are definitely doing what we can. We're monitoring, we're not to a crucial level yet. We will be, we're looking at different, our engineer, our city engineer, looking at different things and kind of coming together with a plan of, you know, what will we need to do? And what is that going to cost? You know, we're hoping for some, you know, obviously grants and things will somewhat come forward, but it doesn't sound like there's enough money out there for every community that needs to deal with this problem. So we'll continue to monitor and do what we have to do when we have to do it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Runk.
I'm, one of the things I'm involved in right now is I'm, was appointed to the State Board of Soil and Water Resources, and there I deal with people from the MPCA, the Pollution Control Agency, and the health, and also from the Department of Health. As far as Oak Park Heights is concerned, I've been talking with them. It seems like it's inevitable that we will be affected by the PFAS. It's currently affecting Stillwater and Lake Elmo. As mentioned by Councilman Doherty, we have been monitoring the situation. We've received a grant to do some pre-planning, which is very unusual, and yes, funding will be an issue. The gentleman from the state health department says there's money in the pipeline, but it's not going to be enough. So we're going to have to see what we have to do.
Okay. Mr. Vandenberg.
I think some of the local communities are a little late to the game. We all knew coming into this that the aquifers that access the wells that were contaminated from Lake Elmo and Stillwater that have been contaminated were the same aquifers that our wells were accessing. Logic and anyone who's worked with aquifers and water flow rates know that aquifers distribute over time, right? So we knew that there was PFAS coming. We just didn't know if it was going to ever be at a concentration high enough, but we waited until we saw the concentration start to rise before we started to take action. Anyone who lives in the current economic society realizes that in the last four to five years post the COVID outbreak, that we've seen costs extremely rise dramatically. And instead of taking a proactive approach and looking towards it three, four years ago when we started seeing issues in the aquifer, we waited until we saw active testing showing issues in our portion of the same aquifer. So I think we're a little late to the game, and I think it's going to cost us a lot more money to solve these problems moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next question, and Mr. Runk, you'll be first. What would be your approach to working with other Oak Park Heights council members who may not share your outlook on controversial and complicated issues?
I think we have been fortunate in the fact that our council has worked together. I said we respect each other, which means, which is the building blocks that you need. If you do have controversial and decisive divisive issues, we've had them in the past, notably when the bridge project was being done, and you just have to respect the person, realize that you have your opinion, they have their opinion, you're both trying to do the same, the right thing by the city, and you have to respect that and not get hung up on it because personally, you're going to have to be involved in many issues besides the issue that may divide you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doherty.
Yeah, I would agree with Councilman Runk. We have a very good working relationship within our council. There's disagreements. We talk them out, but everybody respects everybody else's opinion. Unlike, you see some other councils in the area sometimes go through, we've never had any major problems. I came on to the council actually during the bridge issue, which was an interesting time, but, yeah, I think we, you know, we have work sessions, you know, if we need to talk out issues and things, and it's, yeah, I think it's a great council to work with so far.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vandenberg.
I think when you have a diverse council that has differing opinions, it grows, right? Because the idea of any council that works functionally together and works well together is bringing in a diverse background and educational aspect to talk things out, and I think this council does a good thing of talking these things out. I think they've shown that historically with the few challenges they've had, most recently being the bridge, which was close to eight, 10 years ago. But I think that moving forward, some of the PFAS situations, some of those, there's going to be some more harder conversations to be had, especially as we watch and see 30% of our tax base potentially disappear with the King Plant closing, right? That's a large tax increase. I think it's going to bring some hard conversations in front of this council to make the right decisions for the local community.
Okay, thank you. Going on to the next question, and candidate Vandenberg, you'll be first on this one. How do you plan to engage with and represent all members of Oak Park Heights community, including young people and those who have not traditionally been involved in the work and life of the city?
I think we need to think outside the box and utilize modern technology. Oak Park Heights has historically utilized outdated technology. There was a city council meeting not that long ago that they were sending out an announcement on Facebook, and I publicly spoke up and said Facebook's not necessarily the place you should publicly send out an announcement for a future non-city council meeting because we need to look at the way people communicate, right? People communicate via email, text messages, Twitter, Snapchat, different kinds of technologies. And Oak Park Heights has historically not been very proactive about utilizing those types of technologies, updating the website, things like that. I really want to be a part of that because that is what my generation has grown up with. I've grown up with before cell phones existed, and now I have seen cell phones become more powerful than the Apollo spaceships, and I've seen that gap of technology, and I really want to bring that to the future of Oak Park Heights.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Runk.
Well, I think we've been trying to reach out. Personally, it would be, I make myself available to the public as much as I can. I've been involved in things. As far as the city's concerned, we've been, we are in the process of updating our website. We're trying to be, move into the electronic age. It's a difficult issue. I said, as a small community, it really is challenging at times to make outreach. I mean, yeah, we've gone from the era where we had newspapers that kept the community involved, and that's something that's really affected us is our ability to reach out to the community.
Thank you. All right, candidate Doherty.
Could you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
How do you plan to engage with and represent all members of Oak Park Heights community, including young people and those who have not traditionally been involved in the work and life of the city?
Thank you. Well, I have two daughters that live in the community too, and they're, well, I probably can't say what their ages are, but younger. And so, and like I said, I employ a lot of people of all ages, and so I know, I mean, communicating with people, it's kind of my, my, my life. As for Oak Park Heights, you know, I'm out on the trails, I walk, we ride bikes, meet and talk with people. You know, I just, you know, I think I'm out there, and people can get a hold of me whenever they want. As far as, you know, kind of technology with City Hall, our new city manager is doing a fantastic job of moving things forward, but you know, you always have to do things in the eyes of what's, how much is it going to cost? What's our tax base? And you know, maybe we have, we can't do everything tomorrow, maybe we have to spread it out over a couple of years to get it done.
Okay, thank you. Well, you're first on the next one, Mr. Doherty. What do you think, what do you think the city council should do to ensure businesses thrive?
Well, I think, you know, we do have a very thriving business community right now, very few lots left to develop. You know, we not over-regulate them, I mean, and try to keep taxes down, but I think we have good solid businesses, and we're fortunate to have that commercial tax base that we do have. The whole cannabis business thing is coming up, and we're trying to figure out how that's all going to get regulated and what's going to happen with that. But other than that, I think, you know, everybody's very helpful. I just helped to work with a gentleman that's going to be opening up a business here over on the Frontage Road, and the city staff is excellent to work with. So.
Thank you. Mr. Vandenberg.
I think we need to continue to empower the city staff. We have some really, really good people working on the city staff in this community that have been here, that have both a gamut of experience, both in local Oak Park Heights and then our new city administrator from outside the city, so they bring new ideas and fresh innovative ideas to the table. I think we need to continue to empower those people to take hold and charge, to continue to drive that business innovation within the community. I think we need to be intelligent with the land. I think there's some land out there that we've recently turned down, some sizable tax base, construction projects that we need to think about and take the emotional piece out of it, and look at the logic and look at the numbers and see if it makes sense from an Oak Park Heights city perspective and not necessarily from a personal perspective because I live in a community or on a road. And I think we want to make sure that we're looking at it for the greater good of the community. And I think we need to drive these tax dollars because the tax situation is going to become a major issue moving forward, especially if we have to spend more money to clean up the PFAS.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Runk.
I think we have, currently have a thriving business community. We've tried to be very efficient in the way that we regulate them as far as signage and zoning and such. I think the fact that we keep the costs down as much as possible, that we help with any chances we have with redevelopment, because when we have open spaces in that, it's helpful. The staff here is aware of the situation. They're open to people who come in. I said we have very little developable property. We have a comprehensive plan. I think when we hold to that, it will help develop and it'll help strengthen our tax base.
Okay, thank you. You're first on this next one, Mr. Runk. Do you think Oak Park Heights has sufficient affordable housing units? If not, what would you support, if anything, to increase affordable housing in the city?
Affordable housing has been a problem in this area for years. We have areas where we do have some affordable housing. Unfortunately, the single-family housing prices are being driven by forces outside of our community, and there's not really a whole lot we can do in that case. I said, I think as far as we've been efficient, we have areas such as the Raimi Johnson area, which was developed in the 19, late 1970s, early 1980s. We have other areas where we have more moderate housing prices, some of the older areas, but we just have to continue to use our zoning in that to advance our neighborhoods and take advantage of situations as they arise.
Thank you. Mr. Doherty.
Yeah, I would agree. Affordable housing is kind of a hard one to work with when we don't really have any land available to develop anything, and we've done, in the past, have done some things. I think a lot of, you know, if you look at affordable housing, you look at what people pay in property taxes and special assessments. In our community compared to some of our neighbors, it helps make living here a little more, a lot more affordable. more, a lot more affordable. You know, but I think we're open to people coming in with plans, and if we can find a spot for them to develop, that would be fantastic. We do have, for our senior community, we do have some affordable options with that that have been developed over the years.
Thank you. Mr. Vandenberg.
Yeah, we actually had two really good affordable housing options come before the planning commission in the last year. The planning commission vetted them and approved them, and the city council denied them due to they felt that the traffic addition would be too much on 58th Street. The affordable housing proposals both had done very extensive statistical analysis, including our county, our engineer that we worked that said it would not have a negative impact on 58th, but the city council did deny it. As we've talked about, we have limited land to develop, so I think sometimes when we look towards land development options, we need to utilize the land around us. And when that's a major issue, affordable housing is a concern, I think that's one of the major reasons that I'd like to be a part of the city council, is to look at utilizing that land efficiently and looking at the numbers. Take the emotional aspect out of it, look at the statistics, look at the professionals. That's why we pay engineers to do traffic studies.
Okay, thank you. All right. Oh, yes.
I'll respond a little bit here on the fact that we rejected a couple of items. I did not object to the one item due to traffic concerns. I objected to the fact that it was an improper location. Our long-term plan was to have commercial development. Having lived here a long time, eventually there will be commercial development in that area, and if we had put that residential area in there, we would have had continuous problems.
I see, okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Well, I get, you know, I would also agree with Mr. Runk. It was just the wrong thing, the wrong, good development, wrong place, and it just wasn't going to work there. But also, looking at the emotional side of things, you also have to, on the city council, you need to listen to your residents. And that's their voice, and you need to listen to them and see what they're thinking. And they live in those neighborhoods, they know what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to question number nine, and candidate Vandenberg, you'll be first here. Do you support allowing accessory dwelling units in Oak Park Heights? Why or why not?
Accessory dwelling units as far as an additional building on the property? Yeah, I think it depends on the property, right? I think those are specific to our codes and our ordinances to make sure that we look at whether they fit the property and match the color spectrums, the roof lines, and those types of things. I have, I have an accessory building on my property, and I feel that it adds value to my property and doesn't negatively detract to my neighbors' property values. If anything, it increases them.
Okay. Candidate Runk.
We currently allow accessory buildings. I was wondering whether or not the person who put forward this question was referring to accessory buildings for housing, which is an area in some cases.
I think so. Accessory dwelling units.
Accessory dwelling, that's what I thought. And that I think I would have a problem with, and the fact that the way our community's laid out, the way our services are provided, and we have zoning issues that are meant to protect the properties and protect the neighborhoods. So I would be very wary of allowing accessory dwellings on current properties.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Doherty.
Yes, I guess it's, we'd almost have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. I'm not opposed to it. I think you have to have the proper lot sizes to accommodate that, and we do in the area of the city I live in, where we have a lot of large lots. I'm sure there's some of, you know, there's other areas. But, you know, I know that this is becoming a thing, you know, where a parent moves in with their children or, you know, trying to need help and taken care of. So I think it's, it would be worthwhile looking at and seeing what we can do to accommodate it.
Okay, thank you. For question number 10, and Mr. Doherty, you'll be first. Where do you see people struggling in the community? And as a city council member, what would you do to address those struggles?
Well, I think it's the economy paying for things overall, and, you know, whether it's groceries, gas, whatever it is, things, and, you know, as a city council member, you know, those are larger issues. I don't know if there's, there's a lot we can do. I mean, like I said, just always trying to keep the residents in mind when we're spending money, when we're trying to decide, you know, what the tax levies are going to be. It's tough because the providing services costs for the city is also costs more money every year. But, you know, I think we do what we can, and I do what I can personally to help people.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vandenberg.
I think housing's an issue. I think entry-level housing's becoming more of an issue in the community. Our surrounding communities have more of that entry-level housing for that small-starter family that Oak Park Heights is lacking, and we're losing them to our neighboring communities, which is driving their tax dollars, they're driving their innovation, they're driving their developments. And Oak Park Heights is starting to become stagnant, or more of a retirement community, and that's okay. It's just that that level of housing is something that we're lacking in this community currently. I see people struggling with it, moving away.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Runk.
Struggling in this community, the city, our major element would be that we try and provide services at the lowest possible cost to our residents. That's where our major focus has to be. We are, we're not involved in the social services elements. So what we, if we provide a strong community base, we provide our services, be they public works or police and fire, as long as we provide a stable community at the minimal cost, it's probably the best we can do.
Okay, thank you. Who have I missed? Mr. Doherty, have you spoken to this one, number 10?
Yes.
Okay. I think we're done with number 10 then. Okay, good. All right. I tell you, this grid is something to follow. Okay, going on to number 11, and you will be first, Mr. Runk. Do you support allowing cannabis dispensaries in Oak Park Heights? Why or why not?
I think we're not going to be given much of a choice in the fact that the state, through their permitting process, will allow them into this area. We met with our city attorney's office recently to discuss the situation. The major controls that we have will be, as far as distances are concerned, as far as, you know, such things as how far away can they be from the high school, from parks? I think we're moving toward the situation. There'll be a lottery, we're not even sure when or if the number that we will have in this community over the next few years. I said, I think what we have to do is prepare to follow the laws and protect the community to the extent that we possibly can. That'll be done through our zoning, through the guidelines that the state's providing as far as distances are concerned, and that's all the best we can do.
Thank you. Mr. Doherty.
Yeah, you know, I think this issue, I mean, the state has kind of messed this issue up so badly. But we are, you know, we're limited, we're, once we know what the laws are, what can do, what we can always, through zoning, you know, different, park, daycare, and a school, set limits for those things. You know, and the rest, I think, is really going to be up to the free market on this thing. I'm, I mean, I, it's going to be a legal substance. People have the right to sell a legal substance. We do get tax money from the sale, so it's also going to be a revenue generated, generation for our community, so. But we don't know what all the rules are yet, and we're, but we have met, but their city attorney has a person on their staff that just, that's, all they're doing is keeping up on this, and we will follow their advice and move things forward when we need to.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vandenberg.
I think we should look at other states that have legalized it, and look at what's been effective in other communities that are similar in size to Oak Park Heights, and look at what the law becomes when they announce the laws and the regulations here in the next legislature session, because as I said, the laws and the regulations aren't public yet, and they haven't been announced, and the guidelines haven't been laid out from the state. But once we have those, we should look across the country and see what has been effective and worked in other communities of this size. I don't, I'm not a big fan of reinventing the wheel, and other places have done it before, and this has been legal in other parts of the country for a long time. So I think we should look to those communities, figure out what worked in those communities and what didn't work, learn from their mistakes, and apply those to our local community, whether that's setbacks, whether that's gas stations, whether that makes sense, right? I'm not the expert on the topic, but I think that other places have learned, and we should utilize their learnings.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and candidate Vandenberg, you're first. How do you define sustainable development, and what would that mean to you as a member of the city council?
So sustainability is the buzzword, right? It's, we have to be sustainable moving forward, and we're seeing some of the ramifications of not thinking sustainable with the PFAS situation. So I think anything we do, we need to be thinking five, 10, 15, 50 years in advance, right? When you're looking at some of these developments. One thing that I don't think we're looking at, that I think is very important, that should be part of this community's conversation, is electrification of vehicles. It's coming, whether you like it or not, we're going to have more of it, and we need to start thinking about what that does to our roads, to our infrastructures, to our automation, right? And that's just one minor topic of things that we need to start thinking about from a sustainability aspect. Oak Park Heights, as Mr. Doherty has spoken to today, has a great park system. We have a great infrastructure for that, but we are allowing some of our DNR waterways to be built on as they're building on that property on the Washington County Government Center. That's an exposed waterway for animals, transitory migratory birds. What are we going to do to maintain those migratory patterns in the future, and those waterways for the deer, to keep them off our roads and keep people safe?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Runk.
I think we are attempting to become more sustainable. We've looked at some of the laws and zoning concerning, you know, parking lots, and the fact that we built parking lots for basically Black Friday, and we're looking at any more green space there. We're using add-ins that we have. One of his programs, just outside of here, is underneath the power lines, we have a model that the state's using here for the growth of, I'm just trying to think of the word, prairie grasses and such, because of the fact that the effect it has on, and being on balsor, I've learned about, on not only butterflies, but honeybees and such. We have tried, I said, I would mention the fact that he mentioned the county property, that county property is not in our city, therefore, we did not have an opportunity to have an effect on that.
Okay. Mr. Doherty.
Yes, sustainability. I, you know, I think we look at that as we move forward. I personally, my hotel was the first one to be certified sustainable by the State of Stillwater. My personal residents, we have solar panels on the roof, and they're always looking at things to do. I, you know, and the, well, we actually have one in our backyard, the pollinator gardens, that we've been putting throughout the city. But I think also, we probably could do some more as people come in with developments and stuff and look and see what we can ask them to do more on that end of it.
Okay.
But I think it's, we have to save things for the future, and anything we can do and not to, not to, to make sure that happens is very important.
Thank you. All right. Next question, candidate Runk, you'll be first. Would you support ranked choice voting for Oak Park Heights municipal elections? Why or why not?
I have, personally have problems with ranked choice voting, and as far as at certain levels, because it doesn't work as well as some people assume it is, having studied it while I was in college. As far as the Oak Park Heights, I don't, it probably would work here. We probably could use it if it was something that we felt the community really was supportive of. I'm not entirely sure how well it would work. In a community such as this, it probably would work, so I wouldn't have any objections to it, but I'm not going to be an out-and-out advocate for it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doherty.
Yeah, it's a good question. I guess I haven't really thought much about it. I mean, it's, we don't have a ward system, and so everybody's basically being voted on at large, so, you know, like now, with two seats open, you know, the people, two top vote getters would be seated on the council next year. I don't, you know, I've looked at it, I'm not an expert on ranked choice voting, I'm not sure if I would support it, but, you know, if the community came forth and asked for it, I would do more research and see what, how it would all work.
Okay, fair enough. Mr. Vandenberg.
Ranked choice voting has a lot of really good positives to it in parts of the world, right? We've seen it very effective in different locations. But I'm a big advocate that I feel like the public needs to make the decisions, right? So I don't think that the ranked choice voting system should be something that's driven from the city or the city council. I think that's something that if the community brings forth and says, "We'd like to explore this," it needs to be something that's put on a ballot and allow the community members to make their decisions for themselves, right? I don't feel like that's something that we, as council members, should be driving to the public. If the public is asking for ranked choice voting, we should allow them to make a choice, and we should put it on the ballot and let it come forward in a vote, and let them make the decision, and majority rules.
Okay, thank you. Question number 14, Mr. Doherty is going to be first. What steps will you take to ensure transparency and accountability in city government?
What steps would I take? I think I take steps now. I mean, I think we're open, you know, I don't think there's anything that isn't transparent that goes on up here at this time. Our meetings are open, they're televised, you know, we do do workshops, but those are open to the public if they want to come in. I am available, people can call me, email me, reach out to me on Facebook even, and I'm more than willing to respond to their questions, meet with them personally, and let people know what's going on. I welcome that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vandenberg.
I think we need to utilize better forms of communication with the public. Even trying to figure out when I was supposed to file the run was a challenge, and I had to call the city administrator and ask him what the date was because it was buried so deep in the website, you couldn't find it, right? So I think some of those things need to be more front and center, easy to look, right? Google's an amazing tool. You type in what you want in Google, and it brings it up. We need to utilize that technology in our local resources so we can find things a little easier. I think some of the public records and some of those aspects, as they become digitized, just need to become more easily accessible to the public. So I think I would like to be a part of utilizing modern technology that's honestly second nature to a lot of us, my generation, and utilize that to help make some of these things more transparent for the people. But I would second what Mr. Doherty said. I think that the council we have currently is very available. If you need to talk to them, they'll pick their phones up, and I'll answer their phones, and they're available for comment. I think that's something that a lot of communities don't have, and I think we appreciate having that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Runk.
Transparency is something we strive for here. We now, the fact that we stream our meetings, that they're available on our YouTube channel, the council members are available, we, the staff here is available. If you want to be involved, you can be involved. If you want information, we will try and find it as quickly and efficiently as possible. I said, we try not to hide issues because we want the public input, because that's the way you get support for issues, is by having the public involved.
Okay, thank you. We're ready to move on to our closing statements, and Mr. Vandenberg, you'll be first.
I get to go first? That's exciting.
We're going in reverse order.
I just really wanted to say thank you for the League of Women Voters from White boro Lake for having me today. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak and answer these questions. It's an opportunity a lot of communities aren't afforded, so I really want to say thank you to you guys today for letting us have this opportunity to speak on behalf of our campaigns in Oak Park Heights. I really wanted to say that my, my big takeaway today is I really want to say that I bring something different. I'm, I'm not born and raised in Oak Park Heights, I'm a Minnesotan born and raised, but I have a diverse background of experiences. I- I, I bring those experiences, understanding some of the EPA and the DNR challenges that we're going to be faced with, with mitigation and cleanup in this community, and I bring that unique background to this that the city council doesn't have. I, I really want to be a, drive home if elected to the council, I really want to bring a forward-thinking approach. I want to think five, 10, 15, 20 years in advance, not behind, so that we're not chasing our tails like we are some current situations, and really figure out what to do before the King Plant closes. So I really appreciate the time today.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Runk.
I want to, once again, thank the League of Women Voters for providing this forum. I'm looking forward to, in the next, I would like to look forward to, in the next four years, be continuing to build on what we currently have. I said, I always benefit from the fact that those who came before us look forward and do planning so that financially and structurally, this community is in very good shape, and we continue to do that. We have been looking forward, we are looking forward with the issues such as PFAS, I said, criticism that we've not been able, we have been monitoring it for several years. The situation is, and I personally talked with people at the state, so I know that we are on the top of it compared to a lot of communities around us. I said, I would hope to be able to continue that with the experience and knowledge that I've gained and knowledge about how the city operates and what our residents need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doherty.
Yes, thanks. Thank the League. My mom was a member of the League in Michigan, I remember back when I was growing up. There, you know, I, city plans well for the future. We don't borrow money. The only thing, you know, we borrowed money to build this new city hall, but we put money aside so when it comes to time to redo streets, the money, we already have the money in the bank. We need a police car, we have the funds available to buy that police car. We're not bonding for those kinds of things like some other communities. But, you know, so I think we're, we, we well-planned, I think we have a very good working council. We know the history of behind decisions that are there, and we know the staff and what they're capable of doing and how we can move forward. But I guess, but really, I would just like to, to thank you. I'd like to, you know, hopefully, the people on Oak Park Heights have been happy with my leadership over the years, and I'm, ask them for their vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks.
This concludes our forum for Oak Park Heights City Council. Our website, l w v w b l a dot org, has listings for all of our candidate forums and links where you can submit questions for those forums. You can view the recording of this forum and all of our forums on our YouTube channel, League of Women Voters White Bear Lake area. You can also look for it on your local cable channel at times of their choosing. Thank you, and remember to vote. Early voting is September 20 to November 4th. Election Day is November 5th. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.